Good evening, my call to all in Board of Selectmen's Meeting, November 2nd, 2020, to order at 6:00 PM. If you please all stand for a pledge of allegiance moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to its people, which stands one nation, on a cloud, indivisible, and free of its limits, for all.
Gentlemen, there's only one thing I'd like to put underneath announcements, and I'd just like to put it as chairman's comment, if that's right with you gentlemen, or I can wait for the selectmen's reports.
That's fine.
And I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Again, motion was made by Ruben Whitworth to approve the agenda as amended, second by Mr. McDonald on the discussion. I'll pull the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Earl Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Donald.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth.
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. Fill further notice to comply with the hours say 91-8, the state emergency and governor's orders restriction on public gatherings, the town is limiting tenants at public meetings to conform with the current social distancing guidelines. Town will also continue to offer remote access to those that cannot attend or wish to remain at home. To remotely attend the meeting, audio and video, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. On the day of the meeting for instructions or telephone, the selectmen's office, 603-875-2113 or 603-875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. There's nothing on the emergency management update, I believe? Yes, there is. The chief would like to come up. Chief Heath, I'd like you to come up and join us.
Evening, everybody.
Evening. Evening. Good afternoon, chief.
So I know I spoke at the last minute you about how we kind of elaborated, it was already on the agenda, so I was going to be here, so I figured I'd just let you know how the recent events went and everything else. So we first had the harvest festival that went very well. We did have Halloween trick-or-treating hours this weekend, by all reports selected, and everything went very well. The general public and the community were very cooperative, took the guidelines apart, came up with a lot of innovative ways to hand out candy and keep the social distancing. So by all means, I'd like to, you know, let you know and also express to the public our appreciation from the emergency management team for all their support and their efforts to further, you know, comply with these guidelines that are set forth. Other than that, the other, I mean, it's kind of, it's a hot topic of news, most people know that our numbers are spiking right now, more than usual throughout this. So we do have to be diligent and pay attention to what's going on because we're not out of the woods yet. What's happening now is the weather's going to start getting colder, so those outdoor venues that everybody was taking advantage of for socialization are going to now move to indoor venues, which is going to keep people in closer proximity to one another and more risk of exposure. So it's just something that we're going to have to keep an eye on. You know, everybody throughout the states has to do it at this point in time and continue to monitor it. As you can tell, this being the first night that the public was welcome back to the board meetings, we've opened those back up. We're going to continue to progress in a forward direction right now, depending on how things are. Like I said, we have to watch those numbers very closely and see how things work out over the next few weeks to make sure they don't continue to come. But other than that, things seem to be going very well. We are going to be looking to close, the east side of restaurants is closed as normal at this point in time, be looking to close the west side of restaurant at this point in time, too. And then we're also going to be looking forward to see what, if anything, that we can do to facilitate opening the senior center or giving partially. It's something we have to look at closely because with the winter months, we're also concerned about our seniors population.
Right.
And that being able to get out of the schools.
Thank you, chief. Job pulled on.
Thank you.
True job. Moving on to announcements, the town clerk's tax collector's office will be closed on Tuesday, November 3rd, due to the general election. The election will be held at St. Catherine Drexwell Church in the lower level, 40 Hidden Spring Road, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Town offices will be closed on Monday, Wednesday, November 11th, in honor of Veterans Day. Third announcement I'd like to make just for gentlemen, and it's a little kind of unprecedented, but as we move forward to tomorrow, to our presidential election, I'd like to just reach out as we all go and the community goes to vote tomorrow, that we all remember that we're townspeople, friends and neighbors. And then we leave tomorrow, no matter what the outcome is, that we all respect each other's opinion. And I hope that we give thought to our nation tonight, that we all can come out of this election calm and with civility. And that we keep our interest in our nation as it was founded, for the people. And that we all respect each other as we can go forward. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Additional public comments and questions, concerns? I did have one, gentlemen, I will read, I was going to keep it for my selectmen's report, but it's kind of a nice, nice letter by Pete and Susie McDowell, 58 Tom Road, they're selected. This is a letter of commendation to the Alton, Town of Alton Roads Department. In the spring of this year, Tom Road, a dead-end road in East Alton, was completely modified, regraded and paved. Tom Road, originally part of 28 North, became an entity in 1965 when a new section of 28 North was developed from Route 11 and 28 in Alton to Springfield Point. During the town road project, the members of the roads department and manager, Ken Roberts, were professional, friendly and conscientious. In addition, they communicated regularly with the affected homeowners to assure satisfaction when the finished, with the finished project. All residents are fortunate to have such a dedicated and productive employees. Thanks to them and to you for your leadership. Sincerely, Peter and Susie McDowell. Nice. Liz will make a copy, let's put it in your folders and also send it down to Highway Department.
Nice to hear back.
We just told we had another announcement, date, November 2nd, 2020, reference Waterworks Department, third quarter testing result. The town was found in violation with regards to the arsenic level May 26, 2020. A follow-up sample was collected and results received on October 28, 2020. The results were .0032 milligrams. These results are significantly lower than the second quarter results, which were .019 MGs, exceeding the MCL, thus putting us in violation. Superintendent Mitchell advises that 12 more samples will need to be collected in order to show it is as below the .019 MG test on an average. Therefore, the town is out of violation status. Please keep in mind that the results have lowered significantly and do not exceed the MCL for arsenic. Levy Park will not be turned on through the system until we are lifted from violation status. Questions may be referred to the Waterworks Department at 875-4200. Yes, sir.
Not turn on Levy Park, that's where the problem is. System takes the arsenic out down there that we could, or that we have to adapt the system in there to take that arsenic out before we use that, because we don't want it to freeze up again like it did last year.
Correct. And as she says, states that Levy Park will not be turned on until we're out of, listed for violation status, and...
Find that out.
We can have Courtney come at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Unless she's on the phone.
Can't turn it on.
Put her on here.
Have her at the next meeting.
Well, have her at the next meeting.
Yeah. Adapt something in there, it's better than replacing all the mains down there again.
It could, it could have possibly been that when the pump was down and everything else, and we got everything turned back on.
I think...
And I think this has to do with more Joneses field than it does Levy Park, only because we, that one was down and we turned it on at that same time after we had everything, the pump we had.
Right, well, that's why I'm just asking, because just before we turn, let Levy Park just stay off. If there's a problem there, then we gotta figure out how we're gonna fix it.
We'll have her at the next meeting. Town administrator can do that for us. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, moving on, appointments. We did have an appointment, I saw it earlier, with the gentleman over here on the parking.
So that is down at the bottom.
Down at the bottom, okay.
Discretionary and...
Yep.
In your binder, I can talk about it.
Yep. Okay, moving on to new business, solid waste, solar RFP results and approval. Tonight, we will have Mr. Simons joining us, John Khabiski and Andrew Keller will be on the phone.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you remember, I guess it was a year ago, maybe, presentation first came forward, and the warrant article was approved in March to allow you to go out to contract with a solar company for the capped landfill. Put it in your binder, you'll find a list of people, companies and newspapers, et cetera, that the RFP posted at. There were no responses. So we, everything out again, have two responses, and those two responses are in your binder. And basically, if I can find the sheets of paper here, one is a proposal from New England Solar Garden with revenue streams, and the other is a company that basically said, "Thank you, but no thank you."
The one that fit on?
The Vision Energy.
Is that the person that came in?
Yeah. It's a tough area, that capped landfill, because it's concave, it's not dome-shaped. It's a unique, you know, there's a spring-fed water table underneath it.
They put it right over, yeah.
Yeah.
That was her toll when they were doing it.
This is before you tonight, we'll hopeful approval, so that this can move forward to the...
Move that to voting?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Holt.
He said we're going to move forward. This is a proposal tonight by this firm? Okay, I have...
It's been one or two previous selectmen's meetings as well.
I have a few questions on it.
Yes, sir.
Ready for them.
I'm not sure if I can answer everything, but perhaps the people in attendance can.
Mr. Holt, I'll allow you to start with your questions.
Yes, my first one is, in the proposals, it says it must have New Hampshire DES approval. I looked through all the information, I couldn't find anything. You want to answer that, Liz?
I think Andrew Keller can best answer that.
Mr. Keller, are you there?
I am, can you hear me okay?
I can. Mr. Holt just asked a question, did you hear the question?
I did, thank you, sir. I can happily answer that question for Mr. Holt.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So what you're seeing in the proposal, Mr. Holt, is not the actual completed development work and permitting work? So what was referenced in here as far as getting the DES approval is that once the town, if the town were to choose us as a company to move forward with this project, we would spend the money to go through all the engineering to bring forward an amendment to the landfill permit that you guys, the town has in place today to allow us, hopefully, to install solar on that landfill. So we go through the extensive engineering process of making sure that the piles that are going to sit on top of the soil don't have any negative impact on the actual capped landfill. So all the engineering that goes into that work is what is presented to DES for their review. That takes, you know, four or five months sometimes to get through that process, and then they evaluate all of the engineering that's provided to them, and then it's up to them to decide if, you know, the engineering is sound and it will meet the requirements of, obviously not having an impact on the capped landfill. So you aren't seeing anything specifically in this proposal that speaks to that, because it hasn't, the process hasn't begun until an award is provided to us to move forward with the development.
Next question, Mr. Holt.
Yes, I, you know, I had a question on how you, this, these solar panels are actually fastened or lay on top of the landfill. I believe they sit on top. And my question is, what kind of wind load can they withstand before they flip over?
So, good question. So typically, what we'll do, part of that DES evaluation is to understand if we can put the, these are concrete ballast blocks, they're poured, pour in place, ballast blocks. So there's like a frame that's put in place and all the racking you can solve before the concrete is poured. But before we, obviously, we do any of that work, part of the engineering is to find exactly how big those ballast blocks can be. We don't, we want to make sure, two things to your question, and specifically like Barb earlier, you have to make sure there's no impact to the downward direction on the cap. So that's part of the engineering that takes place with an engineering firm that we would hire, they do all that work for us and present to the state. It would be the state responsible to make sure that that is accurate, correct, and again, won't have any impact. That also goes into your question, which is what happens if there was a heavy wind? How much, how big of a ballast block needs to be placed for these panels not to be lifted up like a sail? I believe the wind load in this area that they model for is, I think, 120 miles an hour, I believe. So there is, that goes into it, it's a site-specific analysis of the snow load as well as the wind load, because obviously, snow load can have additional weight impact. I mean, the panels typically will shed the snow, but that has to come into play in the evaluation. I'm just checking the wind load right now for, and it looks like the maximum wind load, I think I'm seeing is 124 miles per hour, is what the, what the calculation was, pardon, between 100 and 124 miles an hour is what I'm looking at right now.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
At this time. The other company that refused to give us a, well, didn't want to give us a proposal, stated in their letter that there was no, we should have three-phase at the site, which we don't have.
Correct.
Three-phase electricity. And of course, bringing in three-phase is very expensive. How do you plan on answering that problem?
So that, that's part of our initial evaluation before we move forward with any project is, that's the first thing we look for. That's the big fatal flaw in a lot of solar projects in New Hampshire. You know, we're a relatively rural state, there is three-phase, you know, obviously around the state, but we are still relatively rural in that sense compared to some of our neighboring communities. So we do take that into account, and, you know, we go that, we go to the site, we physically have been to this site, you know, we had originally, I think, kind of brought this somewhat to the attention or had some, some interest in this type of a project, as we've done a project over in Milton on the first landfill site ever developed and built in the state, which we did. And then there was also one in Hillsborough, which was the only other, second one that's ever been built, and we also did that one. So we do look at that very closely. I believe the measurement, I'll just double check in my math here real quick, I believe the distance down on 28A there, it looks like it's about, let me just check here. About 1,200, about 1,200 to 1,400 feet down the street to connect to the three-phase power. Again, we understand what those costs are, we take that into consideration when we put this proposal together, we build it into the project costs. We would expect, based on what we know a little bit about electric, you know, New Hampshire electric co-op pricing, that that, the cost of bringing three-phase up to that point would probably be in the, you know, $75,000 to $100,000 range at the cost borne by us and by the project. So that's a benefit, I guess you could say, another additional benefit to the town by having three-phase come up to the site. If you guys ever chose to put in some heavier duty, you know, equipment out there, electrical, you have some infrastructure already up at the site for you guys to tap into.
Any further questions, Mr. Holt? Right now. Mr. Rochelle?
Yes, what is your estimated time of start to completion of this project?
Yeah, so assuming, just making the assumption that today you guys said, "Let's go, let's move forward," and from here until the point where we would, you know, complete construction, because the time of year we're faced with being, you know, the end of the survey season, again, this is a landfill, there's not really a lot of survey work to be done, but there, you know, there is some, some of that work that we need to do, we might lose some of the winter months when we can otherwise get people out onsite to do some, any additional survey work, like boundary work or contour work. You know, we may lose that window. So I'm going to give you a conservative number, if this was, you know, June, I would tell you it takes a year. But based on where we are today, I would expect probably a year and a half to get through the whole process. Again, the, the state process, I believe, is, I think they have a statutory limit of how much time they can spend, I don't know it off the top of my head, but we have to kind of put everything together and then submit to the state when we kind of have all of the survey work completed and done and engineering completed, and then their clock starts ticking. So I would give it a good year and a half to, to be conservative.
Would there be any interruption in the use of the facility from the general public during, during the construction period?
No, I mean, we, this, like I said, this is our second landfill project that we've done in the state, we've, that we built, so I can speak to what we, how we've dealt with it. A lot of these sites are, you know, relatively tight, you know, from a, from a transfer station perspective and flow of traffic. Looking at that site and being out there, we kind of have that kind of lower back corner of the, of the landfill site where, I'm not sure if you guys, you guys have like a boneyard if there's an area where you might store, I forget exactly what goes down that end, but that lower area where the flow of traffic isn't necessary, I don't believe going down to that dead end around the back of it would probably be the most appropriate place from a staging perspective. And again, we've worked with our communities in the past to make sure that, you know, we can work during the times when maybe the transfer station may not be open, so we can work five days a week. But there is kind of a common respect of, this is a, there's a normal flow of traffic to the site and we don't want to disrupt that. And again, looking at this side, I think that lower area might be the best.
Okay, thank you.
Not at this point.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Simons, do you have anything you wish to add?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Say this, say this is up and running, everything's fine, and God forbid, forbid it don't happen to you, what if you guys go out of business? What happens to the stuff that's there?
Yes, good question. So the most important detail here is that there'll be some type of surety that's required, either be it through their planning board process, or it be the state. No, you know, again, in the worst-case scenario, nobody wants to be, you know, left behind with a bag of bones and problems for the town to deal with. So there will be some surety in place to, to make sure that, once the project is up and running, if there was something geopolitical, otherwise, anything that could really detrimentally be directed mental to this project, if there was a new legislative change to the rules that, you know, restricted allowing, putting solar on the grid, or something really, really out of the left field, there would be a mechanism for decommissioning the system and getting rid of all the equipment and taking it off-site. That's the, that's the easy, the quick and easy answer. The, the more advanced answer, I'll say, is that these projects, once they're installed and once they're up and running, they create, it's like, it's almost like owning like an annuity, it just creates cash flow. And once that, the investment has been paid, you know, typically, these projects have some debt, have some tax investors that come into the, in the mix, and once that investment has been paid down, it's, it's an annuity for the next 20 or 25 years, if, an entity. And we are not the entity that physically owns it, we are the developer, we bring the ownership group to the table who will own this, but we take care of all the permitting and all the development work at the front of the project cycle. Those groups that we work with are larger-scale entities that own lots of solar around the country in most cases. And what they would, it's, I won't say it's unlikely that they would go out of business, but they're usually pretty big and pretty diversified, they're insurance companies, they're utility holding-type companies. But if they did go out of business, what I've seen in the past is projects get swapped out or sold to another group that is up and running and does have a lot of these assets. So it's a very slight chance, I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it's a very slight chance that, that that could happen and there would be an impact. But if it was the worst-case scenario, there would be that surety in place to remove everything and take it away.
Okay, I've got another question.
Sure.
This is up and running again, there's something happens and the stuff damaged the cap. You have insurance for it, the bond, or whose responsibility is that?
So that would be the insurance, yes, first off, there would be insurance on the project, absolutely. Professional liability insurance from the engineer's perspective would be what would cover both us and the town. It's ultimately the engineering firm who is going to design this, is going to work with the state of New Hampshire to make sure there is no impact through the cap. If for some reason they, you know, mis-engineered this, excuse me, this project, and there was damage, that would be on their professional liability insurance to, to cover that as a, as a professional engineer. And then again, we too would have, you know, insurance on the equipment, but I don't expect that that would be extended to that type of damage unless it was more of a, it would be the insurance companies kind of going probably head-to-head to see who's responsible. Ultimately, my experience is that if something occurred that damaged the cap during construction, it would be the construction firm's insurance that would cover that. If it was done due to design failures, it would then, we'd lean on the, the engineering firm who stamped the plans and submitted it to the state on our behalf. So there's a couple of different layers there of protection. Again, we've built these ones, we built one on the one in Milton, again, there was disturbance to the grass, but no disturbance to any of the cap, any of the vents, any other equipment, or any parts of the landfill, and we just had to make sure we reseeded the grass and make sure it was properly vegetated, so there was no erosion that would take place. But that's, that's an example of a real-life situation that did take place.
Okay, I got, I got one last question.
Yes, sir.
When this is done, when this is done, do you put a perimeter fence around that, on the perimeter of the landfill, or no?
Most likely, yes. And I say that in that way because at some of our sites, the site itself is, does not have, doesn't, it has fencing, you know, to not allow people in. But there is a balance here, depending on the system size, where the National Electric Code would require it, and especially because of the public nature and public movement of people around that site, I would guess, I would say more likely than not, the answer would be yes. It would be a, a fence around it to keep, again, because of the public being close by, again, it's, these type of projects, unless they went through on a wire, there's not likely to be anything that could happen, but they could get curious and go up and, you know, trip over their ankle and snap an ankle or something, and that's something the town doesn't want to deal with, we don't want to deal with. So there would be more than likely a fence around it, it wouldn't be a, it would be more than likely a ballasted-type fence system, because again, we have to be very careful about penetrating, you know, anything around that. And again, that would go, that would be part of the engineering work that would be done and presented to the state.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Virgil?
You have, you have your annual lease payment, annual pilot tax, then you've got the estimated savings.
Correct.
Now, the only one you're tying in up there is probably the landfill. Why wouldn't we get that other money where we should be saving it? Why wouldn't that be added into your, either your pilot tax or the lease?
If I think I'm following your question, were you asking why that $9,000 wasn't, actually, maybe, can I ask you that? There's a question again, sorry.
Wait, the only one you'll probably be tying in is the landfill. Why wouldn't the rest of that money be added into the lease where we're not going to be using it?
Understood, okay, sorry, thanks. I thought that's where you were going with the question. So the way that the structure of our proposal works is that the first item, which is the easy one, is the town becomes the landlord to us. You know, we're your tenant, we're leasing that land, you know, that has no value to you. So there's, there's the initial $10,000. So there's, there's the, there's the initial $10,000 a year that goes to the town. Um, we would obviously, you know, look to the board of selectmen to enter into a pilot, a payment of tax agreement on the equipment, which is, we typically see on landfills, around $3,500 per year for, for a megawatt. And then the, the last piece of it is again, not required because, um, but it's, we suggest it because the project will stand alone, not connected directly to the landfill site up there. Um, the, the intent of group net metering in New Hampshire, as we call it, um, is that we can build a solar project on a landfill, for example, where there may not be a lot of electrical needs in the area. So we wouldn't physically connect it to your meter at the landfill. And what we have the ability to do is to provide a financial amount of money paid to the town that we can, you can take that $9,000 and allocate it in your general fund to offset your electric bills on other meters and around the town. At the end of the day, we're providing a payment in three components. $10,000 to the landladies, $3,500 for the town pilot and roughly, it's an estimate, but roughly $9,000 a year is the amount of the, um, payments, which we call a solar rebate. And you take those monies in and you can allocate them however you want. The $9,000 represents the, the total amount of value that the solar they would produce based on the amount of power it's producing from the sun.
Yes, but are we going to, are we going to be able to negotiate this lease more or no?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, it says here, terms, 25 years with four or five year extension options. But now can we renegotiate money in those extension options? Well, that, yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because you're giving a 20-year fixed rate.
Well, well, and, yeah, but if we can renegot, we got five year?
There's four, five year extensions.
Four.
Yeah, that's after your 20-year fixed.
No.
That's after 25 years.
No, it says 25 years with four or five year extension options.
And then you got a, yeah.
Does that mean within the 25?
Or that after the 25?
Mr. Keller?
Yeah, so I'd be answering that. So our standard leases in New Hampshire, um, are, are based on the amount of revenue that these projects create. Um, our revenue stream in New Hampshire is substantially lower than our neighboring states. Um, but what we do, our standard lease that we've signed with many other communities, um, and on landfills, is that yes, it is fixed for the first 25 years. Um, after the 25 years, it goes up 25%. Um, and then each five year increment, so at year 30, if we decide to extend it, it will go up another 5%. And then at year 35, it will go up another 5%. So there are some, our standard lease language does have some extensions in there. Um, I traditionally like to provide the most amount of money to our clients at the beginning of the leases for us to adjust and to have like a, a kind of a cost of living increase each year structure. Um, it would lower the initial lease payment down to $7,500 per year. Uh, that's consistent with, um, some other towns that we've worked with. Again, I only want to remind the board that if this was an open field that the town opened, uh, owned, um, there would be a, a, a little bit more lever, uh, leverage on your end and also ability for you to agree to certain terms. But typically we see that a landfill project costs about 20% more to build. Um, and that, that doesn't include the fact that we have the three phase power, you know, you know, $100,000 worth of upgrade costs away. So what, we take all that into account to be kind of fair and, and equitable. And, you know, again, we work in a lot of towns around the state. So you could do some research, you could check around, see what some of the rates have been. Um, and I'm happy to share some of those, those numbers. So that, that's how we come to this place. Um, hopefully it's understandable. If there's, if it's more important to have like a little bit of an increase each year, but start a little bit lower, I have the ability to easily, um, handle that, uh, request. But, um, increasing the landladies over $10,000 makes the project difficult. Um, one other way to solve that, and we did this in the town of Hillsborough with their landfill, is that taxes and pilot, it was more important to them as a town than the lease revenue, just from an optics perspective. So what happened is we, we increased their pilot, I think it went up to like $4,500 and maybe $5,000, but we lowered the equivalent lease down the same amount. So they could see more kind of direct tax revenue coming into their assessor's office. So there's some room to play around with the, the 10 and the 3,500. The 9,000 is also a little bit, if we could get creative, but that's just those are my options you might consider.
The town council's looked at this, everything, has decided off on it?
Uh, no, no, he hasn't. Um, he, well, I did send him the information when they first came forward. And although I do know, uh, as a matter of fact, that he has seen one, um, identical to this in another municipality where I worked, so very familiar with this, but.
And are we going to participate in the, um, what was it? Solar rebate program as a town?
Yeah, that's the, um, estimated energy savings, yeah.
Correct.
All set.
Mr. Kim? Mr. Holt? My main concern is what was brought up earlier by Mr. Simons is the, uh, insurance. If that cap gets damaged down the road, five years, 10 years, who's going to be responsible? You can have different problems here, you can have a company that's gone out of business. The insurance company no longer has the insurance, they don't have the insurance. Should we be looking at some kind of a bond? Guaranteed bond? I'm, I'm not up on that stuff, but I just want the town to be protected. Because this landfill we have, that cap is a unique one in the state. It, I was up there the other day walking it and most, every landfill I've seen and dealt with has, is built, is a mountain, it's a dome. And this one is not.
Oh, we're trying to contain.
This one's got a valley in the middle. Uh, uh, it has a water problem, seeped. I, I'm just worried, I just don't want this project to come back to bite the town 10 years down the road.
Yeah, and if I can, yeah, if I might speak to that, you know, I would just, I would just share with the board that, you know, this is, this is a proposal. Um, there's no guarantee that this project, um, will occur because we, we all collectively don't know what we don't know. To your, to your points and your concerns about the unique nature of this, and Liz has done a great job. When I, you know, first came to her, we chatted about this a little bit. You know, this, this is, this has some uniqueness, it has some challenges, we're going in eyes wide open. I don't want to be here in front of the board and say, we're going to guarantee this project's going to go through. Um, if it was, again, if it was an open field in the back 40 of a property the town owns, I could probably say comfortably that pretty guaranteed this project's going to happen. But when you deal with landfill projects, and again, we, we're the only company that's ever done them in New Hampshire. So we understand nuances to working with the state. We've actually gone as far to work with the state directly to standardize a lease that allows us to work with some of the state-owned properties that are superfund sites and otherwise, you know, challenged sites to bring solar to those sites. They're ver, equally very concerned, the EPA is involved in some of these sites, the, the E S is involved in these sites. So we very much, I, I get your concerns. Um, I just share with you that until the engineering is complete and done by, you know, we use very, you know, respectable, well-established engineering firms in the state to do this work with us. Uh, like you said, there's no guarantee that insurance company, insurance could be in business in 10 years from now. Um, there's no guarantee to know exactly what the impact that these, um, panels will be on every single site. So there is a little, there is some risk for the town, I, I definitely get that and I respect that. We do everything in our power to make sure it's engineered properly, that we use only good equipment, that we only, use only good vendors. Um, and honestly, the state, um, really does hold us to a pretty high, you know, high level to make sure these projects are done without creating issues for the town down the road. Because otherwise, it could come back on them, you know, in some way, shape or form. So I, I'm only saying all that to agree and appreciate the concerns of, of the town. When it comes to surety, um, around these projects, it usually lands on the planning board process. Uh, if that's something required, um, sometimes with these projects, we've used the state as the approval process and then worked administratively with the planning staff to make sure that everything is in place to protect the town and make sure that, you know, um, we don't miss, miss a beat. So those, those usually land on the planning level, but I, I, again, I just want to speak to your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's that, Mr. Jim?
Say, anybody else? Yes, would, would step in because they got to have their.
So I guess, Liz, to you, my only question would be, I, I, I don't want to make a request to approve this proposal tonight moving forward unless the town council has signed off with it and he's satisfied with it. Forward, not to hold up these gentleman any longer. And Mr. Kubinski, are you there? John, are you there? Okay, John's the only one we didn't hear from tonight. Mr. Keller answered all our questions. Um, I'm, the 25-year lease, I can understand because they're making an investment. They're not going to give us a whole lot of money for the first 25 years. The investors are going to want their money, their return. As far as the insurance go, that would be up to the town council recommending if we have a bond or nothing, to carry that through. I understand the concerns. I'd like to see it go before town council, town council signs off and I have no problem approving this. Be moving forward there to see where the permitting process brings us. It's like Mr. Keller said, it does not even guarantee that the D E S will even approve this because it is a unique situation. If we had seen, foreseen back in the past, the way that landfill went, and if we'd done things the proper way back when we had the landfill and not keeping the pits wide open, we wouldn't have the problems, half the problems we have up there today. Standing water was left in those pits, it was never pumped out. The landfill was never covered every night. And when you went up there after heavy rain like we had the other day, there'd be standing water three to four feet in those ditch lines.
There's a brook right underneath there, so.
So at this point, I would recommend that we send this up to town council. He signs it off, if he signs off, no problems, issues, brings it back for us for our approval. Do your gentleman agree?
Yeah.
Just, I'm not going to make ass pro vote, I'm just going to have a consensus of the board. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. So Mr. Keller will send your proposal up to our town council. If he signs off, Liz will be back in contact with you when we bring it before the selectmen at their next regular meeting. Does that sound fair to you?
Absolutely fair, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate the time and hopefully I answered everybody's questions. If there's follow-up questions, please feel free to have, pass them through Liz and I'll be happy to answer anything I can.
I'm glad you answered it with due diligence, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night. Mr. Simons?
Have a great night. Bye-bye.
Yep, thank you, have a good night.
Too, sir. Next, we're going to move on to capital improvements program, C I P presentation. If Jessica could join us, if she'd like. Uh, she wants to stand way back there and Frank, is Frank going to come up with you two? Well, it said that Jessica would be doing the presentation, I suppose that's why.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Frank, the floor is yours.
Good evening, select board, we're a board of selectmen, I don't know what it is, there it is.
I was just to interrupt you just for a minute and Jessica will be in person. Is, um, Amy Tervecky going to be joining us on the phone or not?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, she is not having.
Okay, so it's just going to be the two of you then? Okay.
May we continue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The C I P committee members, um, of the 2020 fourth planning board representative Roger Sample, board of selectmen representative Virgil McDonald, budget committee member representative Pat O'Brien and two citizen members, myself and Amy Tervecky. Along with that, we were assisted by Jessica Call and Amelia, Amelia Kate, who I must have, must tell you, did an excellent job in keeping us focused and, uh, with the appropriate information, and they should be commended for that work. The C I P committee was and has been charged for prioritizing and recommending capital improvements to the town department heads for the current and future needs of the town. This includes buildings, roads, bridges, other infrastructures like water and sewer, vehicles equipped and larger renovations. The goal of the C I P committee has been to listen to the town department heads' needs and assessments and, and their urgency of those needs while trying to stabilize, um, and maintain a consistent tax rate impact on the town's residents. So as not to overburden them with a surprise or too large tax increases. Over the last four years, this committee believes it has accomplished this goal to the best of its ability. We believe the C I P committee continues, we believe that if the C I P, C I P committee continues each and every year going forward, the likelihood of unexpected tax increases will not occur. In front of you are the two spreadsheets that we presented to the planning board and, um, and we have now submitted to both the board of selectmen and the budget committee. You see, the first, those two spreadsheets is an, is an easy one-page read with a consolidated summary spreadsheet of all of the town's departments, capital costs, requests and needs for the next, for the next six years, starting in 2021 and ending in 2026. That the committee recommends to this board. This report also shows the tax impact on the bottom of the town and the school capital projects and equipment based on assessed value of $1,000 for 100. When we tried to, um, and we tried to accomplish, and I think we did a pretty decent job based on what the department heads' needs were, we tried to keep it with under a buck. And going forward, uh, in 2023, 24, 25, I'm sorry, 23, 24, 25 and 26, we'll see that it goes down precipitously, but that's provided, nothing comes up. Um, what this, the, the second spreadsheet is a more detailed of the, of the consolidated spreadsheet. And it's line item by line item. So if you wanted to know exactly what the fire department or the police department were looking for. And we did play with the numbers in each year to try to get that. Uh, it wasn't done, um, it wasn't totally, um, the knowledge of the department heads and it wasn't done, uh, just cumulusly, it was done with some thought and there was not really much change. I will say that the department heads have worked, we worked diligently. We only had, I believe, four departments that came to the, to the C I P board. But they worked diligently to really look hard at what their needs were and tried to be, uh, very conservative. Uh, in the, in a couple, in a couple of instances, we had to actually insist that they put, and put more money into their, you know, into their budgets. Um, because we think, we thought they were being a little bit too stingy upon themselves and it would not be the best thing for their. much change. I will say that the department heads have worked diligently, and we only had, I believe, four departments that came to the, to the C I P board, but they worked diligently to really look hard at what their needs were and tried to be very conservative. Uh, in the, in a couple, in a couple of instances, we had to actually insist that they put, put more money into their, you know, into their budgets, um, because we think, we thought they were being a little bit too stingy upon themselves, and it would not be the best influence of the town. Having said all that, um, what this does not give us is clear visibility to any building, large building capital needs or large infrastructure needs. This is more uh capital improvements on equipment for the towns, uh, different departments, and renovation, small, what I would classify as minor renovations, even within, within the school departments. But it does not address uh, uh, the space needs that of, of virtually every department's asking for. Uh, uh, and, and we have not, we have not put that into the C I P um, uh, agenda because uh, we, the, the board feels that in order to really do this appropriately, we need to update the master plan to understand what the future needs are going to be based on what the citizens are looking for. So I caution the board, as my predecessor did last year, that this does not include any major infrastructure um, 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 money into it, such as a uh, a combination fire station, police station, safety station, whatever you might think I call it. Um, uh, it does not include anything that might be considered civil or water infrastructure. Um, it's just what our needs are that we can look forward to and we actually have a vision to. Um, I think the master plan committee uh will give us more foresight going forward based on whatever recommendations comes from the master plan committee uh going forward. That's it.
I would like to mention one thing that we discussed at C I P on um, the grounds of maintenance. They have all the buildings listed separately. We discussed on C I P that buying those, buying those funds, so it's the town buildings for the community center, the Pearson Road. Kelly, it'd be, it'd be easier for Kelly to be able to do these projects instead of having all these different accounts and asking for money for all these different accounts. Put it into one for the town grounds of maintenance buildings.
Oh, that, that makes sense. I, I can understand where you're coming from from that. But it'd be up, it'd still be up to the Board of Selectmen how those funds are released. So that, I would have no problem with that. What I am, what I am looking forward, I don't know, understand why it takes a master plan to figure out a highway department, new building or a fire department. I understand, I understand to a point where you're coming from, but these two departments are at crucial needs right now. They're not, they're not just sitting there waiting for what could be done in the future. We got a highway department. Since I've been a kid in this town, I've lived here all my life. I've seen it been Band-Aid and Band-Aid and Band-Aid, to the point where there's just no room left.
One big garage down there.
I've seen the highway department being added on where an old dump stood. When they dig too far deep into the sand pile, they end up coming out with metal or bed sprints. I don't think it takes a master, myself personally, I don't think it takes a master plan for a new highway building or a fire department. Um, as far as the police department, that was redone in, in the late eighties and nineties, been remodeled again. I can't see the town going, going forward with a um safety building. I still think those departments should all be kept separate. I've seen it in other towns where they built a safety building. You always got a police department, fire department that doesn't know who's in charge. You get caught at one, or you have to stop, or when you get broke down, somebody asks you, what are you doing here? Says, well, fire department says, it's all right. I'm loading the trailer. I'm in charge of this building. He's not. And that happened to me right over in Allenstown one night. And I wrote a letter to the selectmen, saw, thought how poor his, their police chief was, because the way he treated one of my employees, because the kid broke down in the parking lot, and I was just there to help him out. And I've seen it in other cities and other towns. I do a safety building, departments just don't get along. I hope it doesn't take a master plan to start thinking for the highway agent or the fire chief to come forward and say, I need a new building.
What we ought to do is set up an account and start putting a little bit of money aside and ask the people for the little.
I, I have no problem with that. I, I think what we need to do is, is get money to come up and see what type of building we need for each department. Because Mr. Robertson, he's sitting in the audience, I can even remember a few years ago, it was, it was quite more than a few, I believe it was over twenty years ago, wing tower fell down on a man and crushed his skull, because that highway garage down there is so crowded. Since then, he's taken measures to make sure everything is safe and everything else in there. But at that point, everything was so crowded in there, his skull got crushed.
It's still.
Could have lost the resident town of Alton that night. That was twenty years ago. We still have not done anything about highway department. We have, the town has land, and, and I don't think, I don't want to say anything bad about the committee. I just don't think. I think that's the Board of Selectmen's job, working with the planning department, where we could come up with the department is, where we could put a highway building and a new fire station. Don't think it takes a master plan myself, because if we build a fire department today, it doesn't mean it's going to be the same fire department twenty years, twenty-five years.
No, but I think.
I, I would like to see the selectmen. I, I like the report. It's detailed. It's nice. I just feel it doesn't take a master plan to build a fire station, highway department.
No, but I think it's up to the selectmen to get a warrant article put together to ask the people.
It's the selectmen, the town administrator, and department heads to come up and figure out what it's going to cost for stuff.
One of, one of the things that um the C I P committee over the last couple of years and um, uh, one of the things that certainly um, just happens to be an area that I'm familiar with this equipment. And um, and I am pleased to see that the, uh, the town is taking an approach that maybe ownership is not the way to go in terms of a lot of the equipment that we're wiring today or we're using today in the, on the basis of, you know, and I'll give you a perfect example. In the commercial world, uh, in nineteen sixty, and that's much of this group was still around, okay, your own youngsters then, but in nineteen sixty, um, ninety-five percent of the equipment that was utilized by contractors was owned by contractors. And it was companies like Perrin and Palazzi and Oddling bought the equipment. And what they had in their yards were these assets, these huge fleets, and you were measured by the amount of equipment that you had. As a, a good-sized company that could do the work. Over this last, okay, since nineteen sixty, over this last fifty years, the equipment industry has gone from ownership to rental and leasing. Okay? And now ninety-two percent of all equipment is leased or rented, and only eight percent. Part of it was because the banks were pushing their customers. They wanted to see cash in their bank accounts, not assets. Now we even have a bigger issue with equipment. You can't fix it anymore. You used to be able to fix your own equipment. You used to be able to repair your own equipment. Too complicated now. Now you can't do it. And with tier four engines coming with new equipment, it will be virtually impossible. Even the dealers can't take care of their own equipment because of the codes, okay, to, because it's from electronics over hydraulics. It's not mechanical hydraulics anymore. It's electronics over hydraulics. So if a sensor goes or a board goes, you can't fix the equipment. Ken Robbins has seen that, and the highway department is now leasing more and more than they've ever done before. We're seeing that more and more, because if something breaks down and the, let's call it a cat piece of equipment, and it gets leased from cat, if they can't fix it, they have to replace it that day. So you can keep going. And you don't have storage issues if you don't need to have storage. You don't have to have a mechanic on, 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 um, on call at a moment's notice to make sure, and you have no downtime. Now, sometimes those leases are a little bit more expensive than the ownership of them, but you can also unload it. So I'm happy to see that the town is looking at those types of things. I, even though I own land in the town of London, uh, in the town of Alton since nineteen eighty-two, I have not been a resident since here, so I didn't pay much attention to the town politics of what's going on. But every time, it seems that every time that there was a big war to go for something like this, a fire station, a police station, it got shot down. One of my recommendations would be in the master plan, if we, and the reason I think Ruben, it needs to be in the master plan is because it's a collective community effort to put it in the master plan. It's not what you think it needs to be or what you think it needs to be, but it's a community ethic on where are we going and what are we going to do for the next twenty years? So if you can get people on board that this is in our master plan, whether it's a safety complex or it's a separate fire station, um, highway station or whatever, I would hope that we would also consider private developers building those for us and releasing them on a twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year basis, and we have a fixed number and we don't want it. Okay? It could, I mean, I have no idea if it does or not. I don't know if developers would be interested in that. Okay? But it could, it could stabilize tax impacts. That's all I'm saying. So the committee didn't come up with that because first, none of the heads asked us for it, okay, to, to look into it. But along with that, I think they're apprehensive about asking for something of magnitude, you know, a good-sized fire department. So those are, those are, those are the points that I would just try to, try to make in terms of, I think it's critical that we do have a master plan, okay, because it's not just buildings.
I understand. I'm not saying to kill the master plan. Maybe you took that the wrong way. I'm just saying, what I, what I said, I guess this is where we'll agree to disagree because I would hope the town would never lease a building.
Sorry?
I would hope the town would never lease a building.
Okay.
Okay? But this is where we'll agree to disagree. I didn't say to kill the master plan. Their master plan is needed. But I still think the selectmen have fiduciary responsibility to look at integrated situations, which a fire department is integrated, the building, highway department is integrated. It's outgrown itself. Police department has been upgraded two times since it was built by Mr. Wheeler when he was here. Mr. Wheeler sat and wired it. I remember it. It's been updated twice now. Fire department, can't tell you how many times that's been updated since I've been a kid in this town. And we got one West Alton station, which I'm looking in improvements here. There's really nothing there for it. But I guess that's where me and you will disagree to disagree. That'd be the best part.
We agreed to, agreed to disagree and, and go through the whole thing. I'm just saying it's another option, okay? Something that needs to take, to take in a look. Okay? Nobody thought only leasing was the way to go forty years ago, fifty years ago. Now it's, it's the way it.
For heavy equipment, yes.
Yes, okay.
For heavy equipment, not for regular trucks and cars.
Don't kid yourself.
Well, in my, in my business, sir, it is not the way to go. It costs me more money than what it's worth. That I've already looked into several times over.
I know, and you, but you never know how it's going to happen.
Maybe in ten years down the road, maybe. But right now, no.
Not today. Not today. Anyways, um, so that's what we came up with. Uh, we, if, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
I have no more. It's up to you, gentlemen. Mr. Holt?
I'd just like to say one thing, Ruben. Uh, I agree. I'm not a master plan fan. I agreed, I voted to approve it last year, and a master plan is great as long as it's followed to some degree. I see a lot of towns develop master plans and it sits over there on a shelf and does absolutely nothing. Uh, but I believe in a master plan. If, and if it's done right, and I believe these buildings that you suggested should be in our master plan, and like you stated earlier, it becomes somewhat easier to sell to the townspeople, uh, because it's known. It's a known fact. It's planned. That's what the whole thing is, a plan. Uh, we can start working on it, the Board of Selectmen. I have no problem. They are dire needed, those two buildings. The police, the police has been pretty well taken care of, but your highway department and the fire department, uh, in need of replacement.
And the C I P uh committee, whoever that's going to be on next year and the year after that, and then if, if those are the things that are needed, can start thinking about how do we fund those, what's, what's the best approach? And we'd be reserving to those, those, to those buildings. Yeah. Right now, we're not.
That's true.
I, I will also make one other comment, uh, that this board is, uh, and what Ken Robbins has done with a million dollars of money for the roads that he's put in, okay, over the last couple of years, has been commendable. Um, a road today, in state and town standards, costs about a million one for town property. He's doing three, four, five miles for a million bucks. I gotta tell you, absolutely commendable. Now, is it, are they perfect? No. Boy, I'll tell you, they're damn good. They're damn good. And I would recommend that we continue to push that million bucks a year because this town's getting the benefit of three, four, and five miles, and we've got a lot of roads in this town. We've got a lot of territory that we're covering. So, um, I hope that will continue.
I also um agree with um the master plan. I think it is important um to have direction for the town and where the townspeople that are moving in, people that have been residents for years, have an idea as to where we're going in the future for the next ten, twenty years. And I think it is important, doing something like this is working good with the uh figuring out how we can achieve our goals. Um, certain things need to be in the master plan. I don't one hundred percent agree that we need to put buildings in it, but I do think that the equipment and whether or not the direction of where we're going with the town for uh how we grow is very important in having a plan as to what we accept and we don't accept. So uh, I think what you've done here is a great job. And I, and I, and I think that um, the buildings don't necessarily have to be in this either. But um, I think where this direction is going is a, is a good direction.
Well, one of our charges, if you look at the charges, is any improvement over twenty thousand dollars, and these buildings over twenty thousand bucks, so um, it would behoove ourselves to look at it, uh, and even if it, if it's, uh, if we start allocating for the, for the um fire department and the highway department, uh, at least uh this knowledge to the citizens that there's going to be something that's going to go on in the next, in, in, over the years, and we're trying to get our arms around what that cost is going to be.
Right.
You know? But, I mean, um, if, to do, to do the appropriate fire, central fire station on land only by the, the town, you know, will be in the millions and millions of dollars just as it would be, it probably will have that kind of cost with the highway department if we do it appropriately to the right future. Okay? Um, the fire department will be much more expensive than I think the highway department. But, um, do we bond it? Do we, what, how do we do it? Do we reserve for it? You know, they have those needs now. So also difficult to reserve. So also difficult to reserve for it. That means we'd have to ante up millions of dollars if we were gonna bond it. So I, I don't know what the answer is. That's your job, okay? Not mine, okay? My job is to try to stabilize the tax. My job with my committee is to stabilize the tax. We stabilized it and I tell you, I think we're in the best shape we've been in for a long time, especially.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And fire department in terms of what we're interested in, the future needs are, are equipped, not for the, the building itself.
Right. Gentlemen, any other questions?
I'd like to thank Jessica and Amelia again for, I mean, they did a tremendous job on being able to twist this thing around and.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. I really am.
Along with that, we have been, uh.
I hope that can move forward even towards the other side of the department.
Jessica has, had been, has been, um, contacted by a couple of other boards, a couple of other towns in utilizing her spreadsheet, okay? Because it's so comprehensive and so easy to read.
It made it so easy.
Even Paul can read.
Thanks, Frank.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Lucky to have you. Okay, gentlemen, I need a motion to approve the CIP twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six program.
Motion, we approve the CIP twenty, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six.
Second, now second, I'll push my Mr. McDonald to approve the capital improvement program twenty twenty-one to through twenty twenty-six. Second by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? And the reason I'm asking you to vote on this tonight, so they can get busy on the warrant articles, that's why. There's no further discussion, uh, poll the board and Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Pointworth, yes. Vote is affirmative. Carry on, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, Ruben.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. Jessica, thank you. Moving on to the police department, truck lease purchase. Mr. Heath, Chief Heath, would you please join us?
Truck lease.
Yeah, but that's through the revolving fund.
I thought you did loan to us.
But he owns it at the end of the lease. He doesn't have to turn it back in. Lease purchase. Wait a minute, wait a minute. It's a lease purchase. The only reason doesn't, he doesn't have to come up with full funds right at the beginning. Some of us are still old school where we, we know our debt and we pay for it. We don't have to worry extending it out too far, you know, sir.
Okay, chief.
All right, buddy. Have a good night. Lost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we start, I'll have to excuse myself at the firm that's mentioned here I work for.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Before you have the police chief's recommendation to purchase a, a new twenty twenty-one Ford F-250 to replace the Humvee that we allowed him to, um, sell, the police department sell. He's asking for that to be, come out of his revolving fund and also to have the selectmen's support, putting the month, this twenty-five thousand on the Humvee back into the revolving fund by having Warren Article written up this year. Before you, you have the request. He gave you five proposals. Lease Ford, Rochester Ford is his best option or the department's best option, not his. So at this point, I'll open it up to you for three other gentlemen. Ask any questions of the chief.
Come standard with the snowplow prep package and the power equipment?
Normally, most trucks now, the F-250, four by fours, all come to with a plow prep package, not with a plow. But the prep package has the heavy-duty, um, transmission lines, uh, springs, has the protection laid on the, the transmission. Um, makes, has the extra heavy-duty front end.
When Rochester Ford, your suggestion is, suggesting is going to be, uh, on one's order? That they don't have in stock, correct?
Right, right. We found that by trying to buy anything off the lot is almost ten thousand dollars more expensive. Cause we can't get, can't take advantage of only the miscore revenge that we can before. So I did give you a couple of options.
Yeah.
Trucks on the lot, there was nothing comparable.
Nothing comparable with that. That's pretty good.
And that is a crew cab, full crew cab. So we do have, we do have that extra space.
Other than that, it's pretty basic model.
It is. It's a work truck model.
Yeah.
Yeah. Heavy-duty means, uh, you know, to fall in it and everything else, but, um.
F-250 crew cab.
Brian, this is for your trailer, all your capacity, your trailer and your boat.
Yes.
When you need to have it for room seat management and things.
I could be using it as a cruiser, or?
Uh, we're gonna be, the, um, police detective we use. That was the purpose of, of really being able to have a vehicle that we could utilize more and not sit. It's right, it was sitting that became the worst thing for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Starting was, we're having a lot of mechanical problems because of all the sitting that it did. You know, with this one, um, putting the detective in it, it's on patrol. It's one of the, you know, work the regular patrol shifts or traffic enforcement. But that also gives him the flexibility to, to do a little bit of more work and expectability to take out and sort it out. Life charges are pretty much everything.
Yeah, they.
State police.
Block them pretty quick.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, coming as a crown bit now.
Chief, the equipment you removed from the Humvee, is that what you're gonna use?
Yes.
Everything that, so there's nothing else that's gonna have to be really purchased or anything? You'll be able to put all that equipment?
There'll be a couple of, um, uh, factory, uh, specific components, like the wigwags and headlights, stuff like that. They're, they're, they're activated from the factory and stuff like that. But everything else, the big purchase items, um, light, light controllers, sirens boxes, sirens, speakers, uh, the motorola radio, which is almost five grand. Um, all of that stuff that we had originally purchased through our, through our outfitting grant is all safely packed away at the station right now. That was all taken out and, uh, is gonna be repurposed.
Will be equipped with a computer as well?
No.
You know, six-year lease that you're requesting.
Yes.
What does that entail? Oil changes, everything?
No, the lease doesn't include service, but it is under warranty for it.
Under warranty for that period. So I guess what I'm asking you is, why bother to do the lease, um, if I'm not mistaken? Laura, you gave us the police detail balance of one oh five, six seventy-seven. Is that what I'm, is that correct, what I'm looking at today?
Right after what I was mistaken.
One that was on my desk tonight, September twenty twenty, one oh five, seven seven.
One oh five, eight ninety-nine.
Yeah, there's, um, there's money that's due to come out of that, though, though was the issue is, is that, so our lease payment for our regular fleet.
Yep.
Doesn't come out till the summer.
Okay, how much is that?
Uh, forty-one thousand.
Okay. And do you anticipate any more private detail the next two months?
It's, it'll be limited, very limited because of the weather.
All, the only reason I'm saying that is on your request, uh, thirty-two thousand on the lease purchase. I believe it's four thousand dollars in interest which you have to pay, which is minimal on thirty-two thousand, I'm sorry. But if you're asking the selectmen to recommend putting twenty-five thousand dollars back into your revolving account and support it, I'd request that you pay for the truck upfront, hundred percent full.
Pay it out, right, buy it.
At least that's what I would recommend.
The only concern is if it's a warrant article, this is why.
And, and, and if, if it doesn't, then we're managed.
All right, let me ask this. How much money, how much money was used on, taxpayer money was used on the Humvee to redo or to maintain it after we got it from the federal government, you know?
No, we, we utilized what we did. I mean, I, I can tell you it's part of maintaining it.
I know, right, Frank. You couldn't tell me.
Very minimal, but the, the, all of the outfitting that we did was all part of, uh, E M P G. But, um, so there was the trailer was involved in that. Um, there was some equipment involved in, but to pick out, so that, our match to that was half a soft match, which was time and effort that went into it, but half it was hard. So there was probably, um.
Put a roof and stuff on that, didn't we?
Right. And that was in conjunction with the grant, with everything that came out of that. So they, I would say it would be probably somewhere in the five to the eight range, five to the eight thousand.
I have no problem with the truck. I think the police department should have a truck. I think the little cars, being six foot nine, I couldn't imagine myself getting one of those cruises or being put in the back of a cruiser, okay? Uh, I just think some of the town roads in the winter time, that could be more useful than the cars. I was a little disappointed when I saw you went to all cars. That's, that's all. I know they go just as well and you, you gave me the story.
Really makes it.
Pretty good.
Yeah, but they do well.
But some of us are still old fashioned, you know?
You had to put that trailer on one of them cars and go that.
And even the, even the speedster, I started to hell with the truck.
I have no problem with the vehicle. Being paid through the revolving fund, I'm just thinking about leaving four thousand dollars in your revolving fund over the six years versus that. But I understand your concerns. You got payments coming out of it, uh, being lowered down to.
And we can, there is no prepayment penalty. So if, if warrant article goes through, we can pay it off. We can, I can bring it back to the board and for decision to pay it off and save the interest.
Well, I'll hold you to word on that one. I, I'll, I'll take that as a consideration. I'll, I'll, I'll go along with approving this tonight with you stating that.
Okay, I pack it.
And I do have a question there.
I won't quite read it the way she put it.
Come on.
Chief needs to explain what happened with the sale of the Humvee and how it will be handled through the dealership. The Humvee, though, we sold directly to an individual, correct?
Can you tell them what happened? Tell them what happened with the, the guy in New York that won the bid and?
Well, no, we're not, he, he, uh, he was able to register. We're not doing, we're not, nothing's going through the dealership. The money is, is, what happened is, is we sold the Humvee and the money, because it was an anticipated revenue, D R A and the town attorney said that it has to go back to revolving.
General fund, right.
Instead of the police revolving fund. There was a concern at the beginning when the, the guy purchased the vehicle, paid us the money, that, you know, the money he had, went back home. He had trouble registering it because it has a military title.
Right.
Instead of a conventional title. So the thought was, is that if we ran it through the dealership as a trade-in allowance, they would do an application for title. Um, and then that way it would actually fix everything as far as the transaction goes and make it, it type of like, with a copy of our current registration, he was able to get it through, uh, is it New Jersey or New York? I think it was New York. New York's registration, so he was able to do it. So with that, this is just a straight-up vehicle lease for us. The only way that we can get the twenty-five thousand dollars back into the revolving fund to pay for it is with a warrant.
Okay, I, I wasn't aware that the problem had been solved, so, thank you.
Sorry for that.
Didn't you know there was a problem until right about now?
No, no, no. It wasn't, that was a question I recently posed to Tom, just right at the town attorney. Um, and we had left it, I, I was going to get, um, confirmation from the dealership and a letter from the dealership. And in, in the midst of all of that, the problem had gotten resolved and I have to, I have to communicate that.
There you go. Well, she put he needs to explain. I didn't quite like the he. I just liked.
No, I didn't mean it that way.
Well, I know you didn't. Just the way I read into it. Gentlemen, I, if there's no further questions for Mr. Heath or Chief, I would entertain a motion to approve the chief to go out and purchase from Rochester Ford and that, uh, F-250 twenty twenty-one Crew XL base.
I moved.
Thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Made to allow the chief to go out and purchase an F-250 twenty twenty-one Crew XL base for thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars from Rochester Ford. Second by Mr. Rochelle. Any further discussion? From the revolving fund, we'll do the motion on the warrant article.
Read my mind tonight.
I must be. I'll poll the board and Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative, chief. You do have the right to go out and purchase that. And gentlemen, I need a motion to, uh, allow Warren Article to ask the taxpayers of the community to pull out of the general fund twenty-five thousand dollars, put back in the police department's revolving fund of twenty-five thousand from the sale of the Humvee.
Make a motion that we have Liz write us up a warrant article for the, to have the twenty-five thousand pulled out of general fund and put into the police revolving fund from the sale of Humvee.
Second? Maybe Mr. McDonald to approve the warrant article. Have Liz make a warrant article to ask taxpayers to pull twenty-five thousand out of the general fund to put back in revolving fund from the police department from the sale of the Humvee. Second by Mr. Rochelle. Any other discussion? I'll poll the board and Mr. Whitman.
Yeah.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. There you go, chief.
Thank you. You too. Have a good night.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to old business. Being done, I'll move on to selectmen's reports. Mr. Holt. Mr. Rochelle.
I just wanna, um, point out, and a lot of people already probably know, but, um, on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, the highway department, um, extended the boat ramp at, in the bay, um, which was twenty-five feet. Now it extends out to thirty-three feet from the, measured from the stone wall out. I was there in the present and was able to assist and help. They did a marvelous job, uh, bringing in the stone and reaching out to the excavator. The water was low enough to reach out and four of us got in the water and, and was able to spread the stone and, and actually install the, uh, concrete panels.
They didn't need the barge.
Did not need the barge. Ken had his equipment down there, uh, prior, the day before, with all the stone in bags with the excavator. Was able to walk the excavator down without getting into the water. We got into the water. The, the stone was brought out with the excavator. Bags were cut open and the stone dropped. We put a, uh, a shield all the way around a blanket to protect. And, uh, we put out all that in, spread the stone and, uh, put, put in the panels. Hopefully it, it isn't perfect, but it's gonna make it.
No, but I think it's gonna be a lot better.
It's gonna be a lot better. It might vary an inch to a half inch on eighteen feet. And each panel is thirty inches wide, so it, uh, really came out good. I think, did a good job, Ken.
My favorite is a lot, Rochelle for volunteering just in the world.
I thank you guys for volunteering too. It was a great job by all of you. Thank you. And it was too bad it took so long to get the permit, so we could get it done.
Thought it was chilly.
They can't work a little faster because of those issues, but that's okay. That's conquered.
It'll make a big difference with boats getting stuck and tearing up their trailers.
That's, well, that's what was happening.
Oh, definitely.
Once they draw, you know, come all the way out, once those wheels drop, there's no way of getting them back out without assistance on and out. So it should make a big difference.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitman?
I have nothing.
This is McDonald. Okay. The budget committee did meet again last week. Hooray, we had another quorum, so it was nice. They did approve some of the budgets, I think. As I spoke to the chief a couple of weeks before, I think this has probably been his easiest year to get a budget through without too many questions. Unfortunately, with the budget committee, now, well, no, his budget was approved.
Yeah, but we ain't done it. We might go back in.
Well, five, six, seven, we're done. But anyways, that's up to you guys. But all I'm saying is with the, where they're getting to meet so late and trying to get quorums, they're not, they're gonna go through the budget if they, if they're gonna ask the questions, but if they feel they're, they're adequate and suffice, they will not be bringing them back in. They are trying to approve it and go forward. So I just wanted to let you know that. We did meet, we had a second meeting in a row with a quorum, so, which was good. And that's about all I had, cause I already said everything else. Town administrators report then at this time.
I have five items for open session and the first one is the twenty twenty tax rate. You see at your seat that you have two charts, two Excel charts. The one that is, uh, landscape is, um, just implementation on the, going back over the years. You'll see the year columns on the left-hand side. But the one that you have to make a decision about tonight is the, the portrait, um, type documents. So, um, we were notified by the D R A on Friday that the tax rate is ready to be set. So when you look at this document here, you'll see the tax rate that they are proposing is thirteen ninety-four. And if you do nothing to, um, that, that's the total tax rate of town, school, county, et cetera, et cetera. You'll see different lines across. So if you do nothing, it stays at thirteen ninety-four and the town portion is four twenty-four. Um, however, we always do need to add some overlay into it. Overlay is taken out of the fund balance and that is used for different refunds and abatements through the assessing department. And the assessing department is recommending twenty-seven thousand dollars this year, so that has to be done. So I've added that to the column to each, each amount as you go down the list. The next column is if you want to take some money out of the fund. The next column is if you want to take some money out of the fund balance. To put it towards lowering the town portion of the tax rate. And I did it in chunks like I did last year and the year before, fifty thousand dollar chunks. And then what the resulting new total tax rate would be in the. The town portion of the tax rate. And then down at the very bottom of the sheet, you'll see all of the current fund balance information. DRA recommends the seventeen percent. You have to have between five percent and seventeen percent. We're at ten percent.
Do that after we get done.
So, but I'm gonna pull Laura into the loop here because last year, Virgil, you made a motion which passed. To take $500,000 out of fund balance and put it towards the tax rate. And I think everybody needs to kind of rethink this annual tax rate setting at the end of October, early November. And then your warrant articles in March.
Well, how do, how can we?
But please let me, let me finish. Um, because. And Laura, maybe you can explain it better than I can, but when you take money out of the fund balance to lower the tax rate, you're lowering. The town portion of the tax rate, which does affect the total tax rate. But you're, you're subtracting that amount from the operating budget, which means the following year, you're gonna have a boomerang effect. So that tax rate's gonna go back up to cover that $500,000 as an example, and then some more depending on what is presented. The new, um, there's some different ways that a lot of municipalities around the state are starting to do. And as Ruben mentioned last week, and I think it was mentioned at one other meeting, the town of Guilford, this year. They built up their fund balance to a very healthy fund balance. And as you know, you're supposed to, you know, keep a, a healthy fund balance. Because of an emergency or, or what have you. And when you do get up to a healthy amount, in order not to affect the tax rate. Is, as Guilford did in March, every warrant article that they had, except the operating budget. They used money from the fund balance so that it did not affect the tax rate. You always wanna leave your operating budget alone. And maybe try to work towards paying some of these warrant articles out of the fund balance. Once that fund balance gets back up. Because if you keep taking it out on this sheet. And you apply it to lower the tax rate, you are lowering it, but you're only lowering. The warrant article for your operating budget. So all the others still count towards increasing the tax rate. They start at zero every year and they build it up. That's how they formulate the tax rate. They look at revenues, expenditures and appropriations. And stuff. So it's, it's something that some serious thinking really needs to be done. So that in the future, once the fund balance has been increased to a more healthier level. And we can maintain it at a healthier level. And hopefully we can also continue with the warrant articles, but have the fund balance money pay for those. So that it, they will not affect the tax rate, except for the operating budget. Laura, is there anything that you would like to add to this?
My question to you is, where were we down this year? We must've been down revenues, cause the town budget and warrants, all they think approved last year was pretty much where it was the year before. And we'd come in with a lower tax rate the year before, and then the gentleman added another $500,000 to lower the, lower.
So you have to remember you were on a default budget one year. So that messes up everything. So if you look at last year, you're. You're going up a dollar forty-four this year and thirty cents of that is from last year. So when you take the 500,000 like you did, you, that's only one year. And that's less thirty cents. Your operating budget, your appropriations, 500,000, you have to raise that the next year. That's why it's only one year's worth. Does that make sense?
Oh, because it's a fund balance. We should be able to use that fund balance.
No, I understand. But what I'm saying is like, if you need $10 million and you borrow, you take your money and you pay off 500,000 of it.
Borrowing the money, we're taking it, it's taxpayers' money that's in the account.
Right, I know, but for one year, you lowered what you needed to spend by $500,000. Cause you don't have that $500,000 every year to not have it.
Okay, that, that, now I know what she's trying to say, yes.
Right? So that's why it's going up. So if you wouldn't have done that, it wouldn't be a dollar forty-four. It would be twenty-eight cents less. Unless you reduce your appropriation amount by 500,000.
Then we need to go back into the budget, cause we don't. Budget. You want us to set a tax rate. We haven't got a bottom line on that. But it doesn't, but it doesn't go on this one. It does go on this one. This is the money that we've already spent this year.
So this tax rate that's being set is for 2020. It's always set at the end of the year. That's one thing I need to point out. Another thing is, is remember it's three cents on the tax rate for every $50,000, roughly, roughly.
Yep, and that fund balance, state is provision about that, and they keep saying you need more money in it, you need more money in it. We've always got to, we got the town wiped out by the hurricane, the tornadoes. We didn't even get to a million dollars out of it.
So, uh, so we're, Laura and I are not saying not to use the fund balance to lower the tax. We're not saying that. We think the fund balance should be used, but not for the operating budget. It should be used for individual warrant articles.
Then we don't pay it back.
Apart, you have surplus at the end of the year and it gradually builds and builds over the years. It's just, it's a different method that will not do the spike and dip and spike and dip of the tax rate. If you leave the operating budget alone, that warrant article alone, and you, and don't apply the, the money. To the tax rate at tax reading, at tax rate setting time. Instead, you use the fund balance, if you have enough. Towards certain warrant articles. And you, you remember, it, this past March, there were two or three warrant articles, like. One of them, I think, was the, the lift out there, $50,000. Said funds to come out of the fund balance. This will not affect taxes at all. It's not counted towards the tax rate.
Well, if we're paying those and we're taking it out of fund balance, what's the difference where I apply that money if I'm taking it out of that account?
Because the following year, you don't have that $500,000 to help offset the tax rate again. What's happening is you have to make up that 500,000 you didn't have before. Even though we stayed at basically a level funded budget last year. We'd use the, you use 500,000, offset the tax rate this year. Now all of a sudden the tax rates do. You don't have that $500,000 unless you go in and make a motion tonight to use 500,000 and then they'll bring it back down. But again, same thing's gonna happen next year. It's gonna jump it back up to thirteen ninety-five again next year if we stay around level funded.
Well, then we gotta default the budget.
But if, if you wanna use, if you're, if you're hell bent on spending $500,000 a year. Then don't use it on setting the tax rate. Use it instead in March on the warrant articles. To have papered some of these warrant articles out of the fund balance. That's where you wanna do it. And that will not affect this.
I know if I'm going to thirteen ninety-four, my vote's for defaulting the budget. I'll tell you that right now.
Wait a minute, now let me, let me, I'll tell him. Let me go with you this way. Go back to 2018. You had a budget, you had a tax rate of fourteen thirty-three. Remember last year when it came, when the budget, when the tax rate came in, it went down to thirteen ninety-five. I think it was even a little less than that last year.
Two thousand nineteen was twelve fifty-one.
Yeah, we fought.
Twelve fifty-one and then he.
Why do you got, then why do I have twelve seventy-nine?
Five hundred.
Twelve seventy-nine.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh yeah, over on the right-hand column, yeah.
Way over the break.
Went to twelve fifty-one.
So it went down originally last year.
We fought to get it down.
Oh, we fought to get it down. And then you reduced it more by adding another $500,000. Okay, so it went down originally. It had gone down to thirteen something. Then you took the 500,000, lowered it even further. I took, think it took almost another buck off. And we dropped it even lower. Now you don't have the 500,000. Now it's shooting back up to $13, some odd cents where we, but, but a little more than where we were last year. Originally when DRA set the tax rate, if I'm not mistaken. It was thirteen, I wanna say thirteen forty-four, thirteen forty-five. The initial tax rate when it was set a year ago, a year ago by DRA.
Yeah, and your nineteen rate was the default. Cause instead of 10 million, you only had like an eight million dollar budget. So that's why there's a huge difference. So I, I would have to agree though. I mean, if you wanna save the town funds, instead of leasing these big, you know, trucks for the highway and all that. You're better off to pay off those leases with your fund balance and save yourself all that interest. I mean, every little bit, and, and instead of fluctuating the tax rate every year.
So if you wanna keep that low tax rate, you're gonna have to throw another $500,000. Just remember next year, you're gonna be back in the same boat, but you might not have. Total two point six.
Right now?
Two point eight?
Two point seven nine eight. Yep, it's at the bottom of your sheet, ten percent.
Almost two point eight, about where we were last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Let's put the two on and keep the seven ninety-eight in there. And put the two million on.
So next year, your thirteen ninety-five will be like fifteen.
Yep.
No.
Unless you cut two million.
Mr. Holt?
I think one thing we should do, we've been talking about this for two years. We should determine what we wanna keep for a minimum fund balance. You know, the state says seventeen percent's recommended.
And they keep going up, Bob.
Well, that could be. And what, you said, Liz, we're at ten percent now?
We're at ten point five.
The, the DRA recommends that you keep between five percent and seventeen percent, but they prefer the seventeen percent. You wanna have, you know, healthy. But right now we're at ten percent. It's right on the bottom of the form. Yep.
My only, my only thought, not going to seventeen percent. No, I know she'd like to see us go there. I'm tired of the state considering it's a rich community. And we're having to pay more in state educational funds, and it could be getting worse. Uh, it's not gonna get any easier for the town. So I don't know if I'd go with the full seventeen percent. I might go twelve to thirteen eventually, but.
But we've, we've always been like two point four in that account.
Yeah.
Never, ever had to use it all in an emergency.
Something.
Never, ever have we ever, we've never gone over the million dollar mark on an emergency.
No, but you gotta remember down the road, down the road, if you do bond by having this. The fund balance up to a certain, this is our bond rating still.
And you never, you can, you can never plan for an emergency.
I've been hearing that for twenty years.
Well, that was proven this year.
Yep, that's correct.
So, um, so on this, um, sheet. I, I recommend the second line down, the $27,000 for overlay. We've already added that in. And just, I mean, it's up to you, but. I, I, if, if you, if you wanna use some money out of fund balance towards reducing the tax rate. Use it towards some of these other warrant articles that are gonna be coming forward. That's the proper, the best way to do it.
That makes sense.
It's essentially doing the same thing, Virgil. It's just a different, different way of.
I know, but we should be able to spend the money that the people put in the bank, the townspeople, and put it on. Whether it's our budget or this. If you're putting it to buy stuff, you don't have to pay it back. But if you're using it to reduce your budget, you gotta pay it back.
Well.
That don't make sense to me.
Well, the, the only reason I'll go to you at this point where it doesn't make sense to you. The warrant articles are spread over a period of time. If, the warrant articles do not go into the tax rate, okay? Say, say if we just pay for, just, we'll just use the, a ladder truck, for example, a million dollars. We paid for that right out of the general fund. Then people approved it on the warrant account. Doesn't affect our operating budget. That 500,000, that affected our operating budget. So now this year, we don't have that 500,000 unless we put it back in there again. So there's a big difference in that because the following year, DRA's gonna set the tax rate based on 2021 expenditures. This was based on 2020 expenditures.
Just saying we don't have the 500,000. It's in our savings account now.
Not anymore. We already spent it.
You would have to use it every year. And what are you saying? You're saying you use the 500,000 every year?
We got two, two point seven in that savings account. Now they're telling us we can't use that.
No, they're not, they're not saying you can't. But that's why our, but that's why our tax rate jumped another dollar this year, because that 500 is not there.
You're saying we gotta pay it back in there when it is there, cause we were at two point five last year.
At two point five, you took the 500 out.
That's right. Now we're at two point seven.
At two point, I don't think we went down to quite two oh last year. I think it was a little more than two point five. I think it was around two point seven. Took the 500 out and went to two point two. All she's saying is you have to cap this, put 500,000 towards that every year if you wanna keep that tax rate lower.
When you do the calculation of building up to the tax rate, this is how DRA does it.
If you pay a warrant article off, or if the people voted in, your taxes go up. If I pay this, the budget off. They don't have to come up with that tax money. Why do they have to come up with the following year to pay it back?
They're not paying, they're not paying it back. They're paying it to keep the tax rate down again the following year. You gotta keep doing it.
It doesn't.
It's like putting it in.
But I can do it for a year. Warrant article passes, then you're coming up with the hundred thousand dollars out of taxation. Right?
Well, if you do it the regular way, if you do it out of fund balance, it's not gonna raise the taxes.
And you don't have to pay it back. If I pay.
Right.
All right. If I pay into the budget, then you don't have to come up with it for your taxes. But I haven't paid that.
No, unless you do a lease purchase. If you do a lease purchase, then you'd have to do the same thing next year. But if you pay it off in some, but if you pay it off in whole, it never hits the tax roll. The budget still hits the tax roll every year.
It's, it's, that's a given. That's where.
The warrant article won't hit the tax roll because it would be paid, it'd be self-funded. Where the town budget is not self-funded. It's funded by the taxes, tax. Where the, where the warrant article be funded by your savings account. Cause you already have the money there. You wouldn't have to replace that next year, cause you wouldn't be buying that same truck next year, or you wouldn't be buying this. The, the assessing programs or something like that, that was over fi, over twelve, twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, it wouldn't even show up on the tax roll because it's already been bought and paid for. You had the money sitting there. Right now, the 500,000's sitting there. You're gonna pay, you're gonna change the tax rate. But come next year, after 2021's budget is done, and they say the budget's up three percent, four percent. So you gotta add that in on the, on next, in this November next year for your new tax rate. That's gonna go back up, cause that 500,000 isn't there yet. So if you wanna lower it, you'll have to put the 500,000 again against it.
And it's gonna take us a few years for you to probably see some really good results from this. Cause the more money that in the fund balance, you know, the more order, order, warrant articles each year you could essentially pay for. It just. Something to think about.
I'm gonna reach out just here.
That's a dangerous way of doing it.
I'm gonna reach out here just one real quick to the folks on my, I'm gonna ask Mr. Roberts a question. Mr. Roberts, that new truck coming up this spring, if approved at town meeting, how much was that gonna be roughly estimated?
Hundred seventy-two thousand.
So let's just say, tonight you decide, all right, we're not, we won't touch the, uh, fund balance. Or if you wanna touch fund balance, just say a hundred thousand. Let's just say warrant article for his, that truck, for that department. Be funded solely by the fund balance, a hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. DRA won't even look at that. As part of the tax rate for next year because it's already been bought and paid for. Where the 500,000, when they, we used it to offset the tax rate from 2019, now they're setting the tax rate for 2020. We don't have that 500,000 already there for them to use.
Has to be raised and appropriated.
So it has to be raised and appropriated. Now, you can turn around and say, all right, I wanna do 500,000 again to lower it, but we're just gonna keep doing that every year.
You're also saying I can't use the money in my savings account without being screwed by DRA.
I'm gonna be screwed by DRA.
Of course I am. Because I'm taking 500,000 out of my savings account.
Yeah.
To pay for a budget. Now they want me.
To partially pay.
Now they want me to pay back my savings account.
They're not saying pay it back. They're not saying.
Buy trucks and pay everybody else off. That takes the vote away from the law of the people.
The five, the 500,000 dollars you used last year was to offset the 2019 tax rate. That's all it was. Now we're on the.
Budget now.
No, to keep, to lower the tax rate a dollar to, as you said, it's the people's money, which it is. That was for 2019 tax rate, not for 2020 budget. Now we're, now we're setting a tax rate for what we spent in 2020. You don't have that 500,000. You gotta put another 500 in if you wanna reduce it. You only reduced last year's tax rate, not this year's tax rate by the 500.
But we ought to put the seven ninety-eight in.
If that's your motion, go ahead, sir.
Make a motion. We put the seven hundred, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand towards tax rate.
Wish my Virgil McDonald to put seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars against the tax rate for 2020. Do I have a second? No second. Motion fails. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'll speak at once.
Liz, what was your recommendation?
Um, on this portrait size document, second line down, which you, you don't have to make a motion to put the $27,000 into the overlay. That's just, it has to be done. So it's just, um, approve it, approve that second line of 27,000 overlay and zero from fund balance. And then later, when the warrant articles are brought before you, you can decide at that time if you want to use some money out of the fund balance to, to fund those, uh, some, some of the warrant articles.
You're saying not to use any of the fund balance?
Well.
You're saying second line down would be 2020 was 1394, new tax rate would be 425, uh, 1395, correct?
Yeah. For every $50,000 that's applied, the overall tax rate decreases by 3 cents. And the town portion is actually where it's decreased, which affects the overall, the full tax rate, as you can see on that chart.
Even if you use the, just, just say, Virgil, if you use the 500,000 dollars with the overlay of $7,000 more this year, you'd only be reducing it down to 1367, 1395, if I'm, if I'm reading this right. So you'd only be reducing it 30 cents, nowhere near what we did, reduced it last year for 500,000.
So keep in mind too, as you look at this landscape shaped document, the county tax decreased by a penny. The local education tax increased from 595 up to 641. And the state education tax decreased from 207 to 202. Now, town portion increased from 349 up to 425.
There was 843 versus 757 last year in the school. If I'm, if I'm reading that right.
What are you asking?
I think last year it was 757, 797, right? 797 versus 843 on the school and state, local education.
595 up to 641.
Yep. And then 207 versus 202.
Yep. So even though the town portion has increased once, once this tax rate setting is done, next year at this time, if you use money from the fund balance towards some of the warrant articles, that's gonna help. That's gonna help.
That'll help lower the town rate.
Or keep it where it is.
Yeah. It'll help, um.
But you gotta remember, on 100,000 then, which we basically, that's basically what our health insurance has gone up to now until we decide, talk about it. I mean, that's gonna add 30 cents to the tax rate. Another.
Another 30 cents on top of the 40.
I can use this, I can use this, um, theory of you, of this. If only 50,000 reduces by 3 cents, I can do it the opposite way when I see the budget going up, 100,000 too. What it gonna add to the tax rate? The ball back, yeah.
Next year is a revalue, I believe, right? With a new valuation as well, so that'll change your numbers all of that. Now, what you could do actually is, uh, oh no, next year at this time, the rebel money, the 80,000, you could, um, make a motion at this time next year to put 80,000 out of fund balance towards lowering the tax rate, right?
Oh wait a minute. You want to take it out? You just said no.
Because, because that rebel money is a one-time hit next year. Yes. If you have like a one-time expenditure that's gonna go into your general fund, that much, to keep your tax rate even, you would fund that. So then it, it pays for itself. But otherwise, you're, you're going down and then you're gonna back up. So like, if you're going up with your budget, you want to keep it steady, then you could fund whatever you're going up in your budget for the expenditure. And the tax rate is based on.
I think next month, we're gonna be going back into the budgets.
And the tax rate is based on all of the money warrant articles added together. So the fewer that you have of those, every little bit will help to not impact the tax rate.
Like I said, if we really, if, all departments mostly, all came in where we asked them to this year. You see a 3% increase. But you won't see the spike of that 500,000 because we, we might not use it this year. That's why last year, when I sat here with Sydney, I, I wasn't agreeable with lowering it, taking, using that much because I figured that's gonna hit us somewhere and it's gonna hit us again. We're gonna jump over a dollar again this year. So one year, we looked like heroes to the taxpayers because we reduced it by over a dollar.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Now we're going back up.
The money we used only increased to 30 cents.
Money we used increased, no, we went down last year. You, if you.
I know, but the money we used that they want us to pay back now only increased the tax rate 30 cents. And you've got to dollar something there.
Right. Because there was the default budget in 2019, and that was significant.
Hopefully be another one this year.
Because that was like an 8,000 dollars appropriation compared to your normal 10,000. So you're going from.
8 million to 10 million.
10 million, sorry. So you're going up like 2 million just because you were at a default one year.
Well, I, nobody likes to see a 10% increase in the budget, and that's basically what you're looking at, is 10% increase. Because the people on the outside won't understand it as we're talking about it tonight. They're just gonna see, we got a 10% increase on our taxes during COVID, and, you know, they're gonna get upset. But if you put any money towards it this year, towards that tax rate, you're gonna have to make it up again next year.
Next year.
It's all based on the March votes and the, um, the extra money that you put towards the tax rate at the end of last year. That's what it is.
Even though our budget stayed within the 3 to 5% last year.
Yeah. It's because in, you're going up, I mean, 76 cents from this year from last year is because of that default budget. So that's not all just you increasing your budget. Part of that was because you were in the default by 2 million dollars.
Saying is we should stay at default budgets.
Well, no, because then the next time you don't, you're gonna end up going up even more.
Stay in default budget, your employees aren't gonna get their pay increases either.
But I do recommend that, you know, when the warrant articles are brought before you for, you know, approval to go on to the warrant, and I, I think there should be some serious discussion about possibly funding some of those using the fund balance. That would be your opportunity, Virgil, to use whatever, 500,000 or whatever.
Laura, can you tell us what the capital on the warrant articles last year cost in the tax rate? Can you give us that?
Um, yes, um, what you proposed was about 285,000 because the fire truck FEMA grant, I believe it was a FEMA grant, did not, so they put that 100,000 back in. So it was 185,000. Was your warrant article?
It's not gonna offset your tax rate much at 185. That's only gonna drop you down. 7 cents? So does anybody have an idea?
You're telling me if we go to a default budget again, we've gotta pay the difference in the next year's taxes?
Depending on what gets approved the following year. You raise taxes on whatever is approved at your town meeting. There, there are consequences to voting in a default budget. This is one of the consequences. Yes, so that 2007, uh, 191279 was because you had a default budget.
So if we go to a default budget, you're telling me I'm.
500,000.
You're telling me if I go to a default budget, my taxes are going up?
Right. But the following year, they went up. So 2018, you had a default, 2019, you had a, we did a default budget. Okay, you still had your warrant. After that, for 2020, the town approved everything the board of selectmen recommended.
But we even went to vote. We had set this tax rate.
Yeah, we used 500,000 dollars to set.
Right.
Wait a minute now, wait a minute. To set the tax rate for 2019 to 2020.
You're setting your rate right now.
A year behind.
On the appropriations we are spending right now that were already voted on in March.
Tax rate is basically a year behind because you can't set your tax rate a year that you're gonna be in because you don't know what your spending's gonna be yet. So in 2019, you had the default budget, 1279. Okay, you turned around, you put 500,000 dollars with it, that lowered it even more. In 2020, the town approved basically everything the town, the selectmen wanted. I think there's just a few articles that did not pass for warrant articles, but the operating budget passed. So now we had to make up that money from the year before from the default budget because we went up about 5%. So to offset that from the default budget, which was below, now you have 5%, you gotta come up with that extra 5% somewhere because you haven't put 500,000 dollars towards it yet. But even if you do, you're only saving 33 cents. It's not like you saved the year before in the fault budget. Well, that's pretty good. You're not sitting on Main Street seven days a week, 10, 9 hours a day.
Yeah, and you just.
See, I need protection.
You don't want to use it, but you want to use it for the overlay.
Well, we have to for the overlay.
I have to win it.
Well, you gotta have the money there for abatements.
Yeah. But, you know, I know you want to use some of the fund balance. I agree. It should be used. Some of it should be used.
Oh, no.
But.
On the budget, yes.
Let's wait.
Don't get carried away. Come on.
To the end of this month or so, when you all get your warrant articles and you can figure out what you want to do with some of them. Even if you just do a couple at least, you know? You don't, you don't have.
Okay, couple.
With it, but, you know, and then each year, just reevaluate, add another one in, and then the next year, another, you know? The goal is to, you know, fund them all, hopefully, except for the operating budget. You can't do that one, but that would be nice. It's just gonna take time. It's gonna take years to, to do this.
Gotta stick with it. Well, gentlemen, I need something from you. What you'd like to do? So Liz, your recommendation again was what?
Um, on the, um, portrait type document, the up and down one, the second line that shows the 27,000 for overlays, but zero from fund balance, I recommend you do that.
Virgil, just, I'll just go one with you. Just say it a million dollars, 1394, what's been set with the R A's recommending. You put a million dollars towards it, you're gonna lower it down to new town rate. It'd be 1339. Even for a million dollars, you're still not gonna get down that 12 dollars where we were. So if Liz could tell us that we had 500, 700,000 dollars coming back this year, I'd say road re, road reconstruction next year should be funded by the fund balance. 950,000 dollars and still leave you with the 2 point, 2 million in there. That's, 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 that's the 60 cent, 60 cents hit on your tax rate right there is that road reconstruction every year, 950.
But every year, that's kind of level funded. It's all these other different things, you know, buying a new truck, doing a five-year lease purchase. Pay that thing off. You're saving interest.
Saving interest, all right, yeah.
Pay that thing off and, yeah, it's, you can do it many different ways. That's just one.
Well, it's just one. I mean, that, that's, that's out there, but every year, we put that money aside along with the highway block rent. It's not all the full 950, but. Yeah, I'm just giving that as an example. That's just one of those things you can do by the fund balance.
Yeah, this, this has been a difficult year on many levels, you know, the COVID expenses, the safety of employees, the extra supplies that have had to purchase, you know, and just everything, everything combined, so.
And we heard in July that all the taxes came in within, under the 10% from where they normally are. We collected some back taxes that we hadn't anticipated. But, um, this, this formula has started, when, when did they start this? October, when you turned in the forms? All the revenue forms to DRA? Was it first October or starting in September?
September. We've heard the revenue form.
Gentlemen, any recommendations, what you'd like to use? Do you want to use zero? Do you want to use 50, 100,000, 150, 200, 250? Or do you want to tame Mr. McDonald's motion back again to 700? Yes, here we go with the zero. This has to be done by the 12th, right? So taxes can go out and get everything back in.
It's gotta be before, like now? Because she still has to renew the warrant.
Well, you're really putting us underneath the gun here. I can't even get anybody to make a motion.
We, we brought your attention.
As soon as good.
We were just notified by the DRA on Friday, mid, mid to late afternoon.
You could have sent all this to us on Friday. We could have drank on, on the weekend and figured out what we're gonna do.
I, I don't know. I don't know. Is it, there's quite a bit of.
You see their voices going out the way.
Quite a bit of explanation involved in here about.
I understand. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Using the funds. We've made them beat wood.
Yes. Absolutely. We're getting a dollar 15 increase, gentlemen, in the tax rate. Use nothing, but that also hinders 27,000 dollars in the overlay, which isn't much per se, even taking, adding to the tax rate or taking away from the tax rate because we had 20,000 last year. So 7 dollars, you really can't even count on the penny scale where it would be.
So, um, do you want to take a day or so to think about? I mean, there's nothing scheduled for Wednesday night. You know, if you come back here in 48 hours and you could make a decision if you need to digest this some more.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
That's about the only night this meeting room is available this week.
Oh, I'm not in favor of taking money out of the fund balance to put towards our budget again, the operating budget. No, because you just have to make it up next year again when they set the tax rate. It's gonna snowball. The only reason the tax rate originally went down last year was because of the fault budget.
Right.
So do you, what do you want a motion for? To approve the 27,000 overlay and zero?
Balance.
Approve the tax rate. Approve the tax rate at thirteen ninety-four. Or thirteen ninety-five.
Thirteen ninety-five.
Yep, if that's what you, gentlemen, want to go with. That's using nothing out of the fund balance.
I'll make that motion, Ms. Jim.
I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Holt to approve the new town, all, Town of Alton's tax rate at thirteen ninety-five. And that thirteen ninety-five includes twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Yep. Second by Paula Rochelle.
There will apply.
The fund balance. Open that up for discussion. Being on, I'll pull the board. Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
No.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Vote as the affirmative.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item for you, ma'am.
Next item. All right, so, um, the emergency management team is requested, is requesting that the Board of Selectmen send a letter to the state in regards to possibly providing a porta potty beside the parking lot on Reed Road due to, um, some issues with people in the woods using the bathroom.
Can we bring the chief up?
I would like, I would, I would ask that you consider bringing the emergency management director up to the table to maybe explain it a little more, answer your questions.
Yes, sir. You join us, chief?
I've been up there like an.
Couple parts to this request. One is obviously, you know, we've had a congestion with the hiking parking spread out to a lot of other areas. Now that Reed Road has become a lot more known and it's taken on a lot more traffic. We realized, I sent one of my officers around to figure out what there are for facilities for the hikers with the large numbers that we're getting. And, um, Mount Major has eight porta potties at the bank, which seems to work well for the crowd there, but we found out that Reed Road has nothing in that trailhead park. So that means anybody who needs to relieve themselves is doing it in the residential area or the tree line. And that's just not conducive to, uh, good sanitary.
So you have, you have to get, get a hold of forestry society.
Right.
Yes.
Parks and Forest is what they run these, but, um, you know, there was, uh, I know there was a lot of discussion that went on because that parking area was recently, isn't, isn't that old. It was a lot of, maybe four years ago. Um, and there was a lot of discussions and the state wanted that, so I, I think, I don't think there would be a lot of pushback if they, um, wanted this parking land so, so badly to put some sort of facility out there. I mean, Reed Road is, is, um, well, we had some issues where the roads were narrowed down and shut down because of the traffic on the side of the road. The residents have experienced a lot more difficulty up there than they've had.
So a packed park is big enough.
Um, and, yeah, I, I mean, it's really not a lot of room up there, but now the houses are being built on that portion of the road up in that area. Everything populated too.
I thought we only put one house up in there at the end towards there. Because the rest of the road's a class six though.
Yeah, there's two.
How are they getting permits?
They are.
No, that's, that's not for us to discuss. That's for us to bring in Mr. DeRis on it. Let's just stick to the porta potty issue.
Well, I just think that, you know, the big issue is, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, up to the board as to what they do, want to do, but when you're providing an area gathering to a hiking or any, any sort of state-owned gathering area like that, it's like a restaurant. Um, you know, people are gonna be pulling in there, they're gonna be all, they're gonna be hiking, they're hydrating, it's all encouraged behavior while you're out there. Um, it, it's inevitable. Somebody's gotta eat. They're necessarily eat eight porta potties up there because that would take up the whole parking lot. But one, I think, is a reasonable request from, from a parks department to.
Well, the one to ask would be Gene Young or Russ Wilder to deal with the guys up there. Give them, give them a hint to put a bigger parking lot into.
But also I, uh, part of the discussion we had with that too is not knowing whether or not they actually pull those during the winter months. I, I think that I was, I'm pretty sure that it would hinder their, their plowing efforts.
Yep.
Um, if they left, especially the eight of them of the mountain.
Right.
So I, I thought is, is that they're not gonna do anything anyways throughout the winter months because it's not gonna be heavily populated. I don't know if they plan on actually plowing out Reed Road during the winter. I know they do Mount Major, but, um, Reed Road is I get to, to actually be up there myself during the winter, winter months. So we're thinking if the letter or whatnot would be sort of preemptive for next spring.
So you, that was just what I was gonna ask you.
Yeah.
If there's anything you felt so you needed now or you want to wait till spring?
Well, I, I mean, it would be, I figure, I mean, the other requests that we've put to the state level have taken some time to process, so I'm figuring getting it out over the winter months would preempt it for the springtime.
Correct.
But, uh, you know, I, we, we're definitely seeing, uh, things slowing a little bit now that the weather.
Sure it is.
Cold. The last few weekends haven't been too, too crazy. Um, but, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna win more, especially with the.
So you're not asking us to find.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is, this was a request to, to be put on and called with the people that are running, which is the, the porta potty.
Like they do at Mount Major.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, but at least. I don't think the town should be.
I don't either.
But I do think if there's gonna be a state park, trailhead, it's gonna be in their, to advertise on every hiking site, everything out there. Um, and the state's advertising at that level, I, I think this is really an obligation to us, at least one facility.
At least. I agree with all of you.
I think so.
And, and you know, the issue has been heightened, obviously, by everything we've been dealing with this year.
I have a motion to request that the town, the police chief send a letter to the state in New Hampshire requesting a porta potty up on Reed Road for the hiking trail park. Stay established.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
We went with to request the state send a letter to the state for Paul's porta potty at Reed Road for the hiking area they established, seconded by Paula Rochelle. Any discussion? Pull the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yeah, votes affirmative. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Um, the next item I have has to do with Mill Pond. Um, Mill Pond subwater shed report discussion. Gene Young of the Conservation Commission, um, is requesting a, a meeting, um, board, um, and folks that, uh, from Horstley Witten Engineering in regards to the Mill Pond subwatershed report. Um, so I, I'm looking, I guess.
How about one of our select, how about our first meeting in the summer is the, is Board of Selectmen? And you keep the agenda short for us that night, especially we're gonna meet with an hour on it.
Which one was that?
First, first meeting in December.
Sure, yep.
We should be wrapping up the budget by then anyways.
Yep.
You gentlemen agree with that?
Yes.
That's good, okay.
Thank you.
That was easy.
All right, and then, um, I have two more things. You have all talked about having another meeting in regards to the school street and church street road reconstruction discussion and finalization. Do you want to have a separate meeting for that? Do you want to?
Well.
Is that a regular meeting? Um, and it would, you know, if you wanted the highway manager here, it would depend on.
Correct, he's on vacation, right. Thanks for coming in tonight as Mr. Citizen and Highway Agent.
Loves the town hall.
He said he'd be here for the next one.
You want that on the next agenda?
I would like to have it on next agenda.
Okay.
When he get it done. Trying to pick out dates in between this week would be a little tough only because you got the election and we all have to be a part of the election tomorrow.
Yeah.
And they have other meetings this week too.
Yes, Thursday night for me.
And then the last item I have is in regards to, um, a, an extra meeting in regards to the Highway Department slash Public Works Department discussion.
Have that just as a workshop, nothing else on it.
That's what we wrote down, it was workshop.
So, um, I have a calendar.
Hold on.
With availability date.
I'm gonna look at my own calendar here.
This week, there's Wednesday. Upstairs is available. Or downstairs. Thursday, downstairs is available.
Let's go next week.
Okay, next week.
Do we have a budget work session Monday night?
Yes.
What's left on it?
Um.
Besides health insurance?
Well, I'm still waiting for the admin budget for the NHMA dues, so that's gonna have to come back to you again, that budget.
All right. I'd like to bring up the, um, health insurance again and buzz receive its time, maybe get some quotes out there. Saw some other towns are doing the same thing. Uh, the chief brought me, um, request for proposals from the, that the city of Laconia just put out. Um, like Steve Postle, maybe we could do that if we could save a hundred thousand dollars this year, I mean, it'd be exceptionally well if we could.
The open enrollment is the month of November.
Who's that?
The open enrollment.
Open enrollment.
I hope they're gonna do that this year.
Well, we, we gotta do something because you're just telling the people.
We can't buy insurance.
Your, your, we need changes to the health insurance, depending on the month of November, or January effective date.
This is new federal law shit that they, excuse me, new federal law stuff they got. That our elected, that our elected officials are not helping us get under control.
Anything to screw you.
So next week, in regards to the public works discussion, um, Tuesday upstairs is available. We're closed Wednesday.
That's Thursday, look.
That was the twelfth, yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing.
The committee's meeting in the hiking room, but that's really strange because if no one's upstairs, they should be meeting upstairs. So I don't know if there's something upstairs that's not on this list or not.
The twelfth.
Well, I, the only reason I state that I'd just like to have that only thing on the agenda, Mr. Robbins is on vacation. I'd still like to have him here. He said, I believe he said he was willing to come into that, to sit with us, talk with us about it, um, how we're gonna formulate it.
Yeah.
So I, that's the only reason. I want that, the only thing on the agenda so we can just talk specifically about that and get it done.
So I, I have to be at the budget committee.
Me too.
Thursday.
Me too.
So. So Thursday may not be.
Would you say Tuesday?
Thursday. So Tuesday upstairs, upstairs, next week is available.
What, Monday night though, what do we, Zach, we know what we have on the budget for Monday night.
Yeah, there were a few.
That meets up here, right?
All right, so Tuesday night, Tuesday night, gentlemen.
I can't do it.
Zach.
How about Monday night, or?
If you only thrust the budget out, because I don't, I, I wanna just specifically talk in that, especially with Mr. Robbins willing to come in on his vacation. The same with the school street and stuff.
How about the next week, which would be the sixteen, Mon, um, Monday night out. Tuesday night, hiking room is available. Wednesday night, upstairs is available.
Agenda, I can do it right Monday night.
The agenda is the budget on Monday night. She still has a couple of budgets. We, we, we could just do, it, it, I don't want it to be interrupted by anything else.
The hiking room.
That's what I'm saying, just change one of our meetings.
The hiking room is, um, I get it, that's a regular meeting. Okay. And then the following meet, week, the twenty-third.
No, that's getting too late. We gotta get this done.
What's the eighteenth look like?
Let's go back to a Monday night, even if we gotta put, push the budget out a week.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
So the next Monday night, so it's Monday night. We'll just change it.
For the ninth?
Okay.
Next Monday.
The ninth?
I mean, I just change out the budget.
We have to put our, we have to put our, um, budget workshop on the next selectmen's meeting. We'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's fine.
Let's get this done because we want to get it out to advertise by. Then let's get the, the school street, we'll be done at the next meeting, correct? School street, church street, we said the next.
Next agenda.
Next agenda.
Yep.
That would be on the sixteenth then.
Sixteenth. What else, ma'am?
What, wait a minute.
Sixteen to be.
Both Monday nights.
Yeah, we're just.
Next Monday night, night would be discussing public works.
Robbins, does that work for you? Okay, sir, thank you.
Public works on the ninth?
Yeah, we're taking away the budget out of that night.
Take the budget, the budget down the follow Monday.
The sixth.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, moving on to approval of minutes, October fourteenth, twenty twenty budget meeting.
Make a motion, we approve October fourteenth, twenty twenty budget meetings.
Minutes.
I'll second that. Made by Mr. McDonald to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty budget meeting minutes. Seconded by Mr. Holt. Any discussion? Pull the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yeah, voters in the affirmative. October nineteenth, regular meeting.
Make a motion, we approve a meeting, a regular meeting, October nineteenth.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Whitman to approve the October eighteenth, regular meeting minutes, seconded by Paula Rochelle. Any discussion? I'll pull the board. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yeah, votes in the affirmative. Motion to approve the October nineteenth, twenty twenty, non-public.
I recommend that you keep these sealed.
Make a motion to approve October nineteenth, twenty twenty, non-public session, not to devolve.
Second.
Was made by Paula Rochelle to approve the October nineteenth, non-public session and not to devolve, seconded by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yes. October twenty-fourth, sidewalk minutes.
I move, we approve October twenty-fourth sidewalk minutes.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Holt to approve the sidewalk minutes on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, seconded by Paula Rochelle. Any discussion? Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Whitman.
Actually, I think Mr. McDonald has to abstain. He wasn't there.
Sorry.
Because you worked in the group all day, the day before. Mr. McDonald.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yeah, votes affirmative. One abstention. Mr. McDonald is the abstention. October twenty-sixth, budget meeting.
Motion to, uh, approve October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, budget meeting.
Second.
Motion was made by Paula Rochelle to approve the October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, budget meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Holt. See, there was two there. Any discussion? Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yeah, voters in group. Voters affirmative. Consent agenda approval, gentlemen. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted to us on November second, twenty twenty. Testing Department, Conservation Commission, Emergency Management and Highway Department.
Make motion to approve consent agenda November second.
Second.
Motion made by Paula Rochelle to approve the consent agenda as presented to us November second, twenty twenty, seconded by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? Pull the board, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald. Mr. Wentworth, yes. Vote as the affirmative. Discretionary action on requests for appointments, non-discussory or mandatory vote required to allow or not to allow John Elsley Jr. discussion.
So you have in your binder, um, an email. So in, in, you're, at the last meeting, uh, you wanted to wait on meeting with this gentleman and so, uh, until I could talk with his attorney, and he is recommending that you not meet with him because of the threat of litigation and that instead, um, the town attorney, myself, and, uh, the highway manager and the parks direct, director meet with this gentleman to talk about it and bring him up on, on everything. See how it goes.
I agree.
Okay.
Sense of the board is agreeable?
Yes, yes.
And you will have, um, you and the parks director will be present on this?
Mm-hmm.
You got, if the highway agent's back from vacation, will you bring him? Because he's basically the one that kind of laid it out down there and knows more.
The story of us being able to meet with him. Yeah.
Mean nothing else, gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to go in a non-public session underneath R S A ninety-one dash A colon three, paragraph two A.
I'll move, Ms. Jim.
Made by Mr. Made by Ms., Mr. Wentworth going to non-public session underneath R S A ninety-one dash A colon three, paragraph two A, seconded by Mr. Holt, any discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Folks, we are in a non-public session now at this point, we will reconvene in public